We have a copy from the commission chair of the Arts Commission, Gary Nasr on pillars of our project. Right here?
Yeah.
You can be able to pull it up, Jay.
Yep.
Luckily, I share.
Well, you do this. I see the commissioner realist just going. He's a commissioner realist. Can you unmute? Maybe turn your camera on? Come back to this in a minute. Permission of all we read this. Can you unmute?
Hello.
Mr. Remus, it is a pleasure to welcome you to the Human Rights Commission. Welcome.
Thank you.
And you have just a few minutes to do a quick intro, say hello.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bobby Remus. I was recently appointed by the city council to the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission, and I'm very happy to serve. I'm a native of Palm Springs. I grew up and was raised in Palm Springs, attended Palm Springs High School and graduated, and upon graduation, went to UCLA Law, sorry, UCLA for undergraduate, eventually did my master's degree at law in law school with the University of Arizona. And I currently work as a associate professor for California State University, Los Angeles, and a paralegal for a Los Angeles law firm. And then, last but not least, I've been very involved with diversity, equity, and inclusion work. I've authored several articles that I'm more than willing to share with you. And I look forward to serving on the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Great. Officer Chair Armstrong of the Arts Commission.
Luckily, I share staff liaisons on the Human Rights Commission, so I'm able to give everything I need today. So he's going to be doing the presentation, clicking for me. If you can get it to full screen now.
Yes.
Yes.
I need to get it on the share also.
Yeah, okay. I recognize some of them.
You guys can see all the hesitation in my mouthwork.
I don't have any hand tricks to distract you.
Start juggling.
I know some limericks, but it's okay.
I'll distract. So you're trying to just increase it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you had it there for a second.
The whole presentation will change if you go at the very bottom.
Run right show maybe.
The very bottom four right.
All right, yeah.
See the presentation.
And on the next to the left.
Increase it.
Like teaching my mother how to text. So I recognize some of the faces from when I was here before. I think I was here probably around nine months ago. And presented this concept which the Arts Commission had been mulling around and just fermenting different approaches to it. And I think when we met, we knew we had, this is six platforms and the entrance to city, the city. And we're trying to figure out how we approach it. Do we have one artist take six equities that represent Palm Springs and do them all? Do we have six artists do the same word and to get different interpretations of it? And based on discussions we had with you, and within the Arts Commission, we decided six artists with six different words. This was then approved by the commission. It went to council. Council immediately approved it, so it was, we were good to go. So I just want to talk very quickly about the process because the process was a learning experience for me and for the commission. This was the very first time the Public Arts Commission had done an open call for artists of this scale. Generally, it was, oh, we like this artist. We're going to put his piece of artwork here, or we had pieces given to us for our collection. But this was a major call for artists. And because of the price point in this, it went to procurement. And what procurement means is they basically have entire systems in place in terms of how they communicate and how they hire pieces of work to ensure that they do not violate any, any state laws. We do not violate any county laws, any city laws or anything like that. So they were the ones who handled all the outreach to the artists. And Jay was holding my hand through this process, and it took us about eight weeks to even get the questionnaire done. Dealing with procurement, with how they use language and what we can say and what we can't say. We cannot ask specifically for type of person to enter. We just have to put the opportunity out there. So we got the application out there. We ended up getting a hundred and over a hundred and fifty people that entered and clicked into the application, the procurement system, which was amazing. We ended up getting around eighty-seven, eighty-eight actual applications, which again is probably the biggest response we've had to a public arts initiative. It ended up being around fifty-seven different artists, and they were able to enter into various categories. So you could enter for creativity and serenity and civility if you wanted to, but you could only be chosen for one.
Just a quick question. How did you market or announce this opportunity to the artist community?
So what we did is the city PR firm, Amy Bledsfield, posted it all over the city, you know, the website and Desert Sun wrote about it, Palm Springs Post wrote about it. I personally went into every artist Facebook group, Upper Desert, Lower Desert, South Desert, every sort of one had posted on there. Jay then put it on Call for Artists National websites. And so there was a series of call for artist sites that were on there, and we got some international artists entering. So it was just getting it out there. And if you are an artist and you know how this works, is you put it on one website, another call for artist website will scrape the content and put it on their website. So it was on a couple of websites. We didn't enter it on, but we got artists entering. So that's all I care about.
And you have friends sending it to other people?
Yeah, and you know, send it to people and hey, this might be good. You should enter it. And that was a key point is we can't make the messaging to attract a certain type of person. The best we can do is ensure they see the opportunity. We can't force them to enter. We can't engage them. We just say, here's this opportunity. So someone on staff sent it to the tribal liaison. We thought it'd be great if one of them actually, now, I don't know if they did or not. Again, I wasn't the one curating that. That was the procurement committee doing that. So procurement handled that. Procurement then got a selection committee, and it was three people from the selection committee who all have fine art and public art background. I was not involved in the selection of them. No one from the commission was. Procurement did that, and they were all experts in their field. They then reviewed each of the equities by category. So they ranked all the creativity together, all the serenity together, all the diversity together. And then number one out of the points based on being their recommendation. So the point system was divided into four, four categories. Fifty percent of their points went to the design. Thirty percent went to their personal background, personal and professional background. Fifteen percent went to their budget and five percent went to if they were, had a local footprint. Because the one thing we did want to do is we said this needs to engage greater Palm Springs area artists. I had a twofold mission with this. One, I wanted to come up with some artwork that promoted and defined Palm Springs, but I also wanted to send a message that Palm Springs is an artist-friendly environment. So that's how we put that in there as a question. We're allowed to do that. We're not saying only women can enter this or only men can enter this. It's just anybody who has a connection to Palm Springs, tell us what it is and maybe get extra points for that. Okay, so again, the six equities were creativity, serenity, diversity, stability, community, and equality. And the one, again, these are going along Tacos Canyon way. You can see the, this, the six markers there. And they are replacing where the horses are currently. And so they will all be there. Again, when this was approved by council, Mayor Pro Tempest said that he wants us to heavily document this. He wants to review some of the landscaping around it and some of the lighting around it. So that people will see these and they will stand out. So the one on the far right is really, you know, it's like half a block from when you enter from the airport. And then the one on the far left is really when you're, you're leaving the city, you're going right past sunrise. And so again, it's not only telling you what you're going to experience in Palm Springs when you enter, but also remind you of what you have when you leave. So the first one for creativity was an artist named Roger Lloydman. And what he did is he took the idea of car culture and natural desert landscape and combined them. So this is a large, what he calls a Cadillac, and it's based on the nineteen fifty-nine El Dorado caddy. And it's this big cigar cactus, but it really is car fins. And then the, what would be the flowers at the top are actually the taillights. And so this will light up at night and the taillights will light up at night as well. And these are all going to be lit up, and I encourage anybody who entered to do sort of a day into evening shift. So it looks a little different at night than it does during the day. Every one of these is five by five, twelve feet tall. Except for one is only seven and a half feet tall. So this will stand out and this will look really dynamic and we're going to use this one. This is Serenity. This is by an artist named Anne Faith Nichols. Anne Faith currently has a mural on the side of the Cultural Center. And her whole thing is, and her creative ethos is waves and inspiration. And it, you know, there is this beautiful calming approach. And as she said, her serenity, she said, it may be a bit of a disconnect of water in the desert, but for a lot of people, it was there. It gave them serenity by finding water in the desert, and that's why the original summers came here.
What's the media being used?
This is painted stainless steel.
Of all of them, all six?
Not all of them. For example, the Cadillac is fiberglass.
So they all stand up to?
Oh, they, they're all, that was a big thing. Yeah. And actually, we changed some of the finishes based on what the artists recommended. We've had great experience with automotive paint rather than powder coated paint. So they had powder coated. We said, can you maybe do it on automotive? It will withstand, it's not so much the water, it's the, just constant dryness of the sun. So this one is stainless steel. And if you want to see her wave treatment, as I said, it's on the backside of the cultural center. This one is diversity by an artist named Bernard Hoyas. He's from Desert Hot Springs. And this is a kinetic piece. It's twelve feet tall, stainless steel as well. And it's two hummingbirds that will move in the wind, and as they move around, they will create a DNA strand as they move. And again, it's a reminder that we all share the same DNA. And again, sorry, we're diversity in the birds lights up at night. This one is civility. This was done by two women working together. They were friends who'd exhibited before, but they'd never worked together. And they said that the one artist has a very organic, natural style, and the other one uses a lot of harsh surfaces. So they worked together and showed how the foundation of civilization, civility is architecture. And it was natural work coming together, slowly forming this very static field, and the worst ability comes out of it as well. Community by Madabi, and this is fifty-two signs pointing in every direction saying everywhere is community in Palm Springs.
That's really cool.
Yeah, this one reminded me sort of like a New Yorker, or New Yorker illustration. The last one is Equality by Scott Frashow. What he did is he went back to the very first rainbow flag, the, actually what they call the milk flag. It was the one with eight colors rather than six. And he said, you know, it's, we need to show equality for everybody, everybody. So this is back to the very beginning, not even the sixth one that everybody knows. It's the full eight. Spirit of Serenity, Magic H, or Somewhere Healing. I forget what red is, and then pink is six. And then equal, what he liked is he said, equality has eight letters, and there are the eight, eight colors in the original flag, and then that will light up in neon at night as well.
So.
And that, again, that will be so dramatic, this twelve-foot column, just, it'll be great. Again, so then these are the six pillars of Palm Springs, and you can see that they, everyone's completely different, a completely different art ethos. And yet, when you see them together, they sort of represent what's, you know, there's some that are very iconic, some that are playful, some that are, you know, very soft and romantic, you know, again, when I look at creativity, the cactus and the tail fins, it's fun and it's bright, and I could just see, you know, reproducing that and doing tabletop size, and people would want that.
They all work together really well.
Yeah, you know, as I said, and that was the, the thing is, we wanted them to feel the scent, and you know, because Palm Springs has a lot of personality types.
I like that they work together so well because it almost feels like you know everyone's from this area or everyone has a connection to this area without any of the art pieces actually being different.
Yeah, and so, yeah, keep her microphone. We want those remarks on record.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of these offices of work?
So everything in the public art collection, everything that we do is the property of the city. And the responsibility of the Public Artists Commission is twofold. It is to bring pieces into the collection and maintain the collection. So we're responsible for that, which is why politely suggested they change from powder coated paint to automotive. Because then we only maybe need to paint it every five to seven years, so not every two years. And then the last slide, Jay. So of the six winners, four of them are from the Greater Palm Springs area, which makes a really nice testament. And again, we didn't go out and say only choose these. They just ended up being the ones. And I think a lot of it was because they, they knew the area. They knew what worked. They knew the feel and the personality of the, of the people here as well. And so what that does, and this is one thing that I know made council happy, was we're basically giving grants to local artists. We're giving grants back to the community, which helps that. And the more we can show that this is a community that supports art and creative people are here, it just fosters this sense of pride, and it helps develop our rich cultural tapestry. Okay, now these will be installed on World Art Day, which is April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So that's a big thing. I've had a meeting with head of PR, Amy Bledsfield, and she wants to make, make a big push for that and a big unveiling for that. So stand by, and I hope everybody comes to that installation as well.
How much, how much were the grants?
The grants were fifty thousand dollars each, up to fifty thousand dollars each for the piece. And that was the act where they had to put down their budget of how they wanted it, to how they thought it would need to be spent. And again, we wanted these pieces to, to have substance. We wanted them to feel important. And again, anything that we have in our permanent collection should look like it is important.
How long will it be in place?
So there's two ways to look at that. Permanent collection doesn't mean permanent location. So we may move certain things around, but right now we do not have any planned to move these. So I would say they'll be there for at least five years. That's my guess.
There's just things get older.
Well, you know, things change. Things absolutely change. You know, we just did a, a big shift where we had three big John Klein sculptures, which were around town. One was in front of Regal Cinemas, one was in front of the center in Francis Stevens, and one was in front of Ernst Coffee. People didn't even notice though, just because development had happened around them. And so then we moved them to Dumont Park. We repainted them with automotive paint, and all of a sudden they look brand new, and together they just look amazing. So we also have to be responsive to the, the surrounding and the environment, how things change, what the development changes. And so, but we're pretty pleased with all of this. Are there any other questions?
Very cool. From a human rights commission perspective, does any commissioner have specific comments or questions? I think we're pretty much in on, yeah, the work that the, the last commission has done. And I'm very pleased to say that, you know, when, when Gary and I started to talk this about more than a year ago, yeah. And the fact that some of our commissions have not had the opportunity to work together and collaborate. When Gary explained to me the idea and the concept, and I was like, absolutely, we should figure out a way to collaborate in this because there is that human rights element. We reached in every single one of these pieces, and the concepts were there. So I really offered him to come and make a presentation and make sure that every, every single one of you have the opportunity to engage. This is a very important part of it.
I will say, and again, my background is marketing and branding. I was texting with one of the artists yesterday to get an updated image from him. And I said, I'm presenting the Human Rights Commission tomorrow, but I'm saying, I didn't even know Palm Springs had a Human Rights Commission. So you have an opportunity there. That's a problem, but an opportunity.
To get your message out there. Don't do any, we don't do any promotion of our own commission.
So, so perhaps, perhaps we could use the pillars as an opportunity to do something joint. Maybe we jointly host the six artists and as a discussion or something like that.
Commissioner Real says, yes, I'm the commissioner.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that these are beautiful. I, I just love the representations of these pillars of Palm Springs. I think it's just wonderful.
I, I can add that the diversity, civility.
Turn your mic.
Like, 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 yeah. Like, certainly.
That the diversity, civility, and community equality, all those could constitute, you know, a human rights focus for our commission that would really collaborate with what the artwork does. It's beautiful.
Thank you. I, I just, okay, now, the grants are given, the contracts are signed, I assume, everything's good to go. We're not supposed to focus on the artist is the art. And that was one directive I gave to the selection committee of focus on the art and the diversity of the people we'll follow. So we ended up with having three women, two of them working together, which I loved. I thought that was great. We have a gay man. We have somebody who's gender fluid. We have a man who was born in Jamaica and is somewhat spiritual. And then we have two straight guys. So it's a nice representation, I think, for Palm Springs. I think, again, it's just, you wouldn't know that from the art. That just ends up being, these are the, the sort of people that respond to the potential of being part of the artistry of Palm Springs. And I think that's great.
Is there a way to see? Is there a way to see the other entries? Will there be a some kind of an exhibit of some sort for the others?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not. What we do intend to do is reach out to some of the other artists for future work. Some, I saw some of them. I didn't see all of them. And some of them were great designs. They just weren't appropriate for this assignment. And again, this was five feet by five feet by twelve feet, and they had to be in the median of a four-lane road. So some of them may be great, but you need to go up close to appreciate them. And so maybe we put that one in a park somewhere where people can go up to it. Again, this was, and we kept saying, they need to get the message just by driving by. They need to be able to see it and, and visualize it. And I think that the more we do with the other artists, it takes away from the celebration of these six artists as well. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Gary, thank you so much for that.
And as I said, World Art Day, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we really need to talk about doing a joint thing with these artists, so you guys can start getting some name recognition in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you so much. The next presentation is California Today, A New Approach for People with Severe Mental Illness by Commissioner Colore.
So I, okay, there, I have a presentation that Jay is going to pull up. Can you hear me?
Does your mic come? Or no?
Yeah, the light is green.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, so I, I can start by describing. I also have a document. Care Court, I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's been implemented. Governor Newsom had proposed and helped craft this legislation. And what it does is it, it started in Riverside County. It'll be spread to all the counties, but it is a mechanism to fast track people, homeless people, people with behavioral health problems, people that are psychotic or that have a schizophrenic spectrum. Now, these people who, who are a danger to themselves, who are out on the street, who are homeless, they can be referred in to the care court. And they have, the care court then is a, a court judge makes an assessment based on the information, whether this patient truly, you know, is not decisional, whether he fits, he or she fits the plan for having continued resources, behavioral health, the county Behavioral Health Agency will be part of a group that brings these people into the, into the care court. And then the care plan is designed by resources. It, it's, it's pretty well structured. There's a judge, an advocate, and there's also behavioral health treatment that eventually places these people in housing and then develops a longer-term how, recovery for them. Now, if you can flip to the next slide, I've summarized this. So here is the actual, the, I want to say the logo, the picture that is for California is Care Court. And it talks about acting early to get people the support they need. But, and then setting the, the icon, setting them up with an individual care plan. So you can imagine, you know, how labor-intensive this is going to be, but it's a wonderful program. But just fleshing that out, and how is it going to look in Riverside County and in Palm Springs? But anyhow, again, here it is. I'm care, the, the bullets, Care Court connects a person struggling with untreated mental illness, also substance abuse, although substance abuse by itself is not a criteria, which I think some people were upset about in the original legislation. But the Civil Liberties Union, you know, really said we cannot displace people against their will. Each plan is managed by a care team in the community and clinically prescribed individual interventions with several supportive services, medication, a housing plan. And it's a client-centered approach that includes a public defender and a supporter to help make self-directed care decisions. So if we could go to the next slide, Jay. And so this is, this is pretty dense. We can send this out to you, but, but if, again, it focuses on the schizophrenic and the psychotic individuals. And the court ordered response can be initiated by family. So, you know, families are, you know, can really, you know, have, be at a loss about how to handle their psychotic, you know, loved ones. What do they do? So this is a way of kind of entering them into either a conservatorship or into this care plan, can be for twelve months. And then you can, then patients, I should say patients, people are monitored and they can be graduated for twelve months into a long-term recovery program, or they can be continued for another twelve months. And again, there's funding here, but you know, I guess the big question with these big governmental initiatives is how does the funding reach Riverside County and then Palm Springs? So there's fourteen billion multi-year dollars. So anyhow, I, I want to say, in my visits to the wash, which I try to do weekly or bi-weekly with the police and the various folks, DAP, Desert Health, oh, Health and Care District, Martha's Village, like seven people come, that, that police were concerned about, you know, how do you get, the, the court systems are already backed up? How do we have the courts, the judges available to be able to process these people? And behavioral health resource, resources are, are really difficult to come by here in the desert. So anyway, I, I just wanted to update this. I mean, this is part of the whole homeless initiative. But I, you know, I'd like to continue to see with, with the city and, and with, the police are very into this, obviously, where this goes. And then one more slide, Jay, I think I have, and here, here it is. This is the pathway. So here's the wonderful consultant-created, yeah, pathway about how this all works. You know, the referral, the clinical evaluation, the California support and success. And there's like various points along the way. So it's a kind of a demonstration. And then the final slide takes you through, that's kind of more details about what that is. And then the very final slide is the questions that I suppose, this is something probably the Human Rights Committee should be, you know, taking initiative about. Where are the resources? We have a shortage of short-term beds. The Navigation Center is going to give, is going to provide that. But then transit, transitioning to housing, I say longer term, but this requires housing over the twelve months. These people are, are there. Staff, and then what about technology, computers, registration, the possibility for going? And then, and then how are we going to implement? How will Riverside County assist? And what's the city council's role?
So those are very important questions. Thank you so much. That's a great presentation and great topic to introduce. And so this is kind of a program coming from the state. Does that fall into the work that we're doing, Jay? With economic development and the, and the creation of the Navigation Center?
Yes, it does. It's one additional tool to assist homeless individuals who need a particular type of care.
And how do you see us in the Human Rights Commission? In addition to being there, participating and listening and figuring out all this information that's coming, I guess, you know, sort of downward from the state. How do you see us in one of these?
Well, frankly, the direction comes from the city council. And so the Human Rights Commission believes there are areas that need to be considered, perhaps communicating that to the city council for some additional call it investigation and also action.
That's great, great. Any comments, any comments from commissioners, questions?
I'm curious. Colonel, thank you for the presentation. In regards to the short-term beds and shelters, is there, is there a funding mechanism to create more transitional housing for?
Now, as I understand it, and this is from, Jay, this is from Roman, who asks, is that there are like twenty of these short-term housing overnight shelters in the heat of the summer, I believe, at Martha's Village, the boxing club, Martha's Village. But during the winter, there are no temporary beds, and that's what the Navigation Center is trying to create. I think by next month, there might be fifty beds available. Jay, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Is it being February twenty twenty-four? February twenty twenty four. Um, yeah, the funding is wherever we can get it. There's grants from different places. Right now, the Navigation Center construction is made up of several different grants, uh, ARPA, Home Key. And there's few others also in addition to that. Plus, the city's on contribution of um, general fund dollars to make all the happen. So uh, there's a lot going into it. Uh, the um, twenty beds, I believe Commissioner Rankin mentioned are only made available when the county has funds that it can contribute. And the county has to provide funds throughout the county. So, uh, you know, there's needs in different areas. So when Palm Springs can access the funds, we are able to have overnight shelters. But if we don't during the extreme heat, we we don't have that kind of uh, assistance available. Uh, but what's on the horizon with the Navigation Center is uh, fifty beds for overnight shelter plus eighty modular units that will provide a transitional housing um, facility for individuals to graduate and become independent and self-sufficient.
Uh, is is the Navigation Center, where is that located?
It's off of um, it's on McCarthy Road. I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's by uh, San Rafael and um, between Palm Canyon and Indian.
I mean, sit, take a look at it, is it?
It's under construction.
Oh, I see.
This is the north end of the city of Palm Springs. It's probably adjacent.
Like four million, I understand there's something.
But yes, quite a bit. The grant from the state um, was nineteen million. And uh, another grant from the state was um, for funding that will be used for this is about five billion.
Jay, for the record, where can we find information about progress in, is it in the website? It's on the website?
Yeah.
So the city website resources, right? Excellent. Additional questions, comments, while we, while we're in this? You're muted. You're muted.
When do you think the um, this project will be completed, the construction?
So the first part I mentioned, fifty beds will be completed uh, by February. Should be up and running by February, but the eighty modular units probably will not be open until uh, July twenty twenty four.
Between February and July.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
You know, I I just like to make an additional comment in um, in in talking to Frank Arino and Andy Mills um, group. Um, they're really very frustrated. You can imagine, you know, taking people off the street um, who might be actively doing drugs or active vet, putting them in the jail and then helping them overnight or having them detox overnight and then having no place else for them to go. It's it's an extremely frustrating situation. And so I think this Navigation Center will be very very um, helpful.
But but that isn't what we're talking about here. This is particularly for people that have a terrible illness diagnosis.
Right, that is careful. We're just talking, we're talking about the lack of beds, overnight bed, shelter beds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Rankin. It's just a great update and certainly um, encourage you to continue to keep your eyes and ears open to that because it's so important and we we must figure out what we gain of all. Um, wonderful. Okay, so moving on, uh, we have a reading of the Human Rights Commission Proclamation of the Hispanic Heritage Month. For your reference, commissioners that are new to the commission. Uh, we did this proclamation in twenty twenty one. And that was the first time we read the proclamation and uh, Commissioner, you know, had a great suggestion that we do an update because there was some information that we wanted to include with addition to Native Americans. Um, so we did that. And what we'd like to do now is a, I hope it will be a fun exercise activity. Um, so we're going to do a reading of the proclamation with the distinct.
Uh, a motion to uh, not to cut you off, but I'd like to make a motion that the commission table the reading of our Human Rights Commission Proclamation on Hispanic Heritage Month.
Based on what, Commissioner?
Based on, well, uh, during discussion of the agenda item, um, the, I had requested last, the last meeting that there would be a separate proclamation to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, which was October ten. In a subsequent emails, I reiterated my request, but that uh, didn't quite make it. And I noticed in a reading of this result, this proclamation that a paragraph was inserted about indigenous peoples. And I feel that uh, the inclusion of a single paragraph recognizing Native Americans in this proclamation is highly inappropriate. Um, so I would move that this item be rewritten to remove the references to indigenous peoples. And a separate proclamation on Indigenous Peoples' Day, twenty twenty three, be prepared for acceptance at our next regular meeting on November thirteen, twenty twenty three.
Where, which part of the document are we referring to, Commissioner?
I think it's the fourth paragraph.
Commissioner, you know, what your suggestion is, we have to do that, recognizing both of the importance of standing there.
Not if we're not simultaneously going to recognize Native Americans, which are a significant portion of our community here in the city of Palm Springs. I'm sorry, I raised this at the last meeting. I raised this in multiple emails. And I feel very strongly that we should not nothing against Hispanic Heritage Month, but if we're not simultaneously going to recognize indigenous peoples in a separate proclamation, similar to what President Biden did on October sixth of this year, then I feel as a Human Rights Commission, we need to step back and we can relook at these proclamations. There should be a separate one for indigenous peoples and a separate one for Hispanic Heritage Month. Until that is tasked and put on the table, I cannot support this proclamation. So we do have a motion on the table, which I believe would require a second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and we have a second. And um, any comments? We're going to put this to a vote.
Uh, I I completely agree with you. Uh, but then again, also uh, do we have proclamation for women and a proclamation for black people? And
Not yet. I do believe when we wrote this, it was something that our chair, our now chair, had offered and volunteered to write on his own because it's something he felt very passionate about. Um, but at the time, that has not been motion, not, there hasn't been other proclamations that I'm aware of, at least since I've been here that have been.
So how complicated is it to write a proclamation? I I don't know. Uh, is it just one of us writing up something they think?
It's basically, sorry, not to catch you off, but it's basically doing some research and what I said, you can model it pretty much after other proclamations, whether they're from the state of California, the City Council, other human rights commissions, or in this case, President Biden, who wrote or hadn't staffed right, a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Because it's mostly a uh, reiteration of specific facts and history for that community, including with recognition of their contributions and accomplishments.
Can I amend the motion, um, whereas we take out the paragraph that refers to the Native Americans, approve the Hispanic Heritage Month, and then come up with a second proclamation for Native Americans?
So we have another motion? How do we vote on this, Jay?
We have a first and a second. We can vote and see if it passes or fails, and then consider additional motions at that time.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Vino and a second by Commissioner Blood. We're going to take a vote on that first motion. Those in favor, please raise your hand.
You need to repeat it because.
Yes, okay. So the motion, the the motion that Commissioner Vino will do will be to not have a reading until we have a second proclamation for Native Americans.
And then, the reason I would tie the two together is I want to ensure that there are two.
Granted.
My concern is if we proceed with the reading of the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation today, we'll never see an Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
We're already past this.
So let's take a vote, let's take a vote on that first motion and then second by Commissioner Blood. Those in favor, please raise your hand so we can count. Okay, so we have Commissioner Vino, Commissioner Horn, and Commissioner Blood. And now we introduce the second motion.
Correct. Motion does not pass. Uh, there was a second motion.
So the second motion by Commissioner Rankin would be to take out that paragraph for indigenous people and focus on what's in the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation and do a reading on that.
Today.
Okay, today. Do I have a second to that motion?
I second.
And Commissioner, we're in a second as well. Thank you, Commissioner. So we're going to take a vote on the second motion. Those in favor, please raise your hand. To do a reading.
Here we go.
So we also have three.
Four. Four. Five.
Four. So do we have the the ace out?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
What's the corner? How many? There's seven of us voting members today? Four, five, six, seven.
Okay, great. So the motion will pass, and we're going to proceed to read the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation without the paragraph that's specific to October the tenth on Native Americans, which is the fourth paragraph. We're going to leave that out. We're going to work on preparing a proclamation for Native Americans. And um, we send that out in our next meeting.
Oh, we are.
I I hope so. I would. It's already late, but, you know.
The Native American?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Who's going to write it?
Can I?
Sure.
Okay.
There you go.
Am I allowed to?
Commissioner.
That's the only way to vote on.
Commissioner, you have your hands up.
Yes, I can help, um, I can help Lily write that, draft that. So Lily, why don't we exchange emails afterwards and we can go write that, draft that together? Is that okay?
Perfect.
Wonderful. Thank you both for, um, properly engineering so well on this. Great. So um, very simply, we'll just go around and read the paragraph. Um, I would like to start in my left and we just go paragraph one. Jay, you are properly participating in paragraph two. Then we'll go to Commissioner Rinas with paragraph three. We'll ask Commissioner Vino to read paragraph four. And next, we'll go to Commissioner Greer. Then to Commissioner Blood. Then will be followed by Commissioner Rankin. And then
It's Michael.
And Michael, I'm sorry, Michael. Yes, Michael. Then Commissioner Flood. Then Commissioner Rankin. And then we'll finish. I'll, I'll be happy to finish it. Okay, so this is a proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month that takes place from September fifteen to October fifteen twenty twenty three. Mics on, please. Mics on, Commissioner.
Where is this located? I apologize.
Uh, it's in the packet.
Oh.
It would be in the agenda that was emailed us by.
The agenda packet is right there. We'll give you a second to locate.
Wow. It's been a long day.
It'll follow it'll almost follow the the meeting agenda.
It's based on the calendars.
And then the calendar.
Yeah, I see the ca- I see the calendar.
And then you're going to come to the document. This is proclamation of Hispanic Heritage.
Oh, I see it. I see it. I apologize. All right. So where did you want me to read? You go.
So Lily one, Jay two, you'll be three.
Okay.
Vino will be four, Commissioner Greer will be five, Commissioner Horn will be six, Commissioner Blood will be seven, Commissioner Rankin will be eight, and we have to finish it up. Okay. So proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteen to October fifteen, twenty twenty three.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and honor the heritage contributions and significant achievements of people with roots from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, including indigenous, Brazilian, and other non-Spanish-speaking people.
Whereas the city of Palm Springs recognizes the unique diversity and rich histories of the Palm Springs Hispanic and Latino culture. We acknowledge the countless contributions that Hispanic Americans make every day to our culture and to our city. And
Whereas the day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of the eighteen twenty one Declaration of Independence from Spain or five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively, and
Um, Commissioner, there's still a little problem against natives?
No, that's a part of it.
Next.
Whereas by the nineteen twenties in Palm Springs, the original Mexican-American pioneer families came to work in agriculture, the railroad, and construction. Their arrival was the beginning of a new life in a new country, and they were instrumental in supporting the growing Palm Springs Village Resort Destination. And
Whereas Hispanics are the largest ethnic minority in the county, the largest and fastest growing minority in Palm Springs, and represent twenty-six point eight percent of our entire population with over twelve thousand, at least hundred residents. Since nineteen ten, as families left Mexico during the Mexican Revolution, many generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped to make our city and our community strong and prosperous. They continue to contribute to our community in countless ways, including having positive economic, social, and political impacts. And
Whereas Hispanic Americans embody the best of our American values, including a commitment to faith, family, and to our country. Brave Hispanic Americans protect us and have served proudly and bravely in all branches of our na- of our nation's military since eighteen sixty-one. Hispanic Americans work in industries that are essential to the continuous growth and prosperity of our economy, including construction and manufacturing, retail, food, and hospitality, healthcare, and social services, transportation and warehousing, and residential and commercial services, among many others. And
Whereas most students graduating from college in Palm Springs are Hispanic or Latino with a large number of degrees awarded to licensed for practical and vocational nurse training, nurse assistant and patient care assistant, medical assistant, and home health aide. And
Whereas we're proud of the Mexican heritage that includes Indian and Spanish welcome centuries of hope and sacrifice. Diverse Mexican-American, Chicano, Latino, Spanish, Latinx, or Hispanic cultures are essential to defining the unique culture represented by community members residing within the city of Palm Springs. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the undersigned members of the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission, do hereby proclaim September fifteen through October fifteen, twenty twenty-three, that Hispanic Heritage Month in Palm Springs and encourage all residents to celebrate the rich culture, heritage, diversity, and achievements of Hispanic and Latino Americans. And go forward every day, recognizing their contributions in the great city of Palm Springs. Be it resolved, this celebration serves as an opportunity to dispel ignorance, prejudice, and fear to medication about multiculturalism and the resilience and history of the countless contributions of Hispanic and Latino identified communities. In furthering so, the city of Palm Springs Human Rights Commission encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities and is committed to recognizing and celebrating efforts to bring people together for the greater good. Number ten, twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, second meeting on the government wreckage. Thank you, Bernard. Moving with the agenda, with the acceptance of the agenda, beyond any comments, Commissioner Vino.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, adding an item after item number on approval of minutes. The motion be to elect a successor vice chair to complete the current vacant term, which expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Furthermore, after this, this election, uh, should it be necessary to elect a commissioner to serve as the rotating member of the executive committee nomination and an election, shall be immediately held to fill the current term, which expires October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and extend the term of the rotating member for an additional three months until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So, so we have a motion on the table. Who will have straighten?
You know, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure.
I mean, that's pretty.
Sure. So I'm moving that we, after we've approved the minutes or voted on the approval of the minutes, we add an item. The item would be to elect a successor for the vice chair, which as you know, was held by our um, Donna Shepherd, who resigned earlier. We would elect a vice chair to complete that current vacant term, which expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Furthermore, after that election, should it be necessary to elect a commissioner to serve as the rotating member of the executive committee, we would have nominations and election immediately to fill the current term, current term of the rotating member of the executive committee, which currently expires at the end of this month, and we would extend it to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So we have, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, second by Commissioner Horn. And do we have votes to accept the motion? Raise your hand. Okay. So it looks like we have five votes to move.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm checking uh, information I have received from the city attorney previously regarding adding items to an agenda. The commission may take action on items of business not appearing on posted agenda under any of the conditions stated below. Uh, determination of a majority vote that an emergency situation exists on a determination of a two-thirds vote of members of the commission uh, present at the meeting. If less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present, that the need for an action uh, to come to the attention of a local agency um, subsequent to the agenda being posted. So it sounds like a two-thirds vote would put it on the agenda, and the item was posted for a prior meeting uh, occurring not more than five calendar days prior to the date the action is taken. Uh, so that would not be the case to consider an action on or request or remember to participate in a meeting remotely. Okay, that would not apply either. So uh, the vote will require two-thirds. We have seven members here um, and which is uh, under two-thirds, members of the commission present at the meeting, or plus two-thirds are present, two-thirds.
It's more than two-thirds, right?
We have more than two-thirds.
Okay.
Yeah. Seventy percent of us.
Okay, so majority vote. Okay, so we're gonna put to a vote. And for that, we also obviously need to have a nomination, right? We have a nomination, self-nominations, or commissioner nominations.
Well, right now it's approved the agenda, and this is to add this item to the agenda.
To the agenda, to add to the agenda. Okay. Having said that, I completely agree with that. We need to add that to the agenda. Um, in order to proceed, it would be really important for everyone who is present today, before we put this to a vote, to seriously consider um, a nomination or uh, a self-nomination or a nomination of others.
All right. We just took a vote to amend the agenda, to replace this after approval of the minutes.
After approval of the minutes.
We can move to approval of the minutes, and then we will move to this new item, the election of a vice chair.
Okay. So, so, so we do have more than two-thirds, and we can move to approval of minutes and include this to the agenda. Okay.
Although we, only five of us voted. Do the other two members wish to vote, or are you not voting?
You, you voted then.
I did not vote.
You didn't vote. I'm sorry, you and.
And the new member did, did he or?
No, Commissioner Remus did not.
No, I did not.
Just wanted to be clear. We record the vote. Yeah, we.
Yeah.
We saw five hands here.
Great. So with that, uh, the motion passes, and we're gonna move to the approval of the minutes. As the next item on the agenda.
Public comments.
Public comments first? Yes, public comments. And we do have a public comment, I believe. Yes, Doug Evans, Doug Adams.
Evans.
Evans, Mr. Evans, welcome. So this time it's been a sign for members of the public to address the human rights issue on the agenda item and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Um, three minutes is allowed. Three minutes is allowed for each speaker, although the commission values your comments. Although the commission values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action items not listed on the posted agenda. Commissioners will not enter any discussion with speakers, but during commission comments may refer the matter to staff for report and recommendation had a future commission. For the record, sir, can you say your name?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Doug Evans. I'm with friends of Frank Bogart. Uh, we've, we've appeared before you uh, multiple times, and, and hello to the new commissioners. Um, I'm gonna kind of jump in the middle of a two-year dialogue. Um, the uh, we want to thank Human Rights Commission for voting twice to put the monument report uh, prepared by the Human Ri- Rights Commission on your agenda. And we're bitterly disappointed that without explanation to us or to you in a public meeting that we're aware of, that you have been blocked from talking about that report. It's slanderous. It's not factual. And it's, it's really causing problems with it still being out there. I passed around a summary of documents that the city has recently, uh, in the past few months, posted on its website. If you want to see the real story of section fourteen, start with what the city found in their archives after all these years. It's numerous resolutions going back nineteen fifty-one. It includes documents from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. It includes demolition and burn permits, signed by the Indian Alatis, conservators, and in some cases, the property or the, the building owners, including ministers. What it shows is completely contrary facts to what's in the Human Rights Commission report that's consistently being quoted in the media. It's being quoted by the section fourteen survivor groups. And to have a legitimate discussion about something this significant, it has to be based on facts, not fiction. We have asked for two years to know who wrote the report. Nobody here would tell us. The city council would not tell us. The staff would not tell us. The survivors told us in one of their postings, Councilmember DeHartet. We know there's other people because we've seen the, the emails. We've given them to you. The other people in the community and the democratic operatives that were brought in to try and manufacture a report to tarnish a man that worked tirelessly for this city because of a statue in front of City Hall, trying to make him a demon, when in fact, if you look at the record, Mayor Bogart was the one that was trying to create some sense out of a chaotic situation caused by the federal government having to do with leasing and renting of Indian land. It's far more complex. My other time?
Time's up.
In my letter that I'm gonna pass around, I did make one typo caused by spell check. Uh, it should be unsubstantiated, and it says unsubstituted. Uh, I did this right before I came down, so I could hand you something. I thank you very much. We would wish you would put it back on your agenda and put it on the agenda for a discussion, or invite us back for a presentation, or invite the Historic Society here for a presentation on section fourteen. It would be absolutely consistent with your goals printed on your agenda every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Appreciate the additional time and your time, and I'm sorry I brought up something that some of you are new to. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I don't believe we uh, voted on the amendment for the minutes.
We have. Okay, we have. That's, that follows. I see Kendall, welcome, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. If I'm not, my apologies. Kendall, are you here for public comments?
No, I'm with the Palm Springs Post. I was just listening in.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Um, I do have you, so we have the acceptance of the agenda. So we, we would be acceptance of the agenda to vote, right? Next.
The approval of minutes.
Your minutes.
Well, you're next, Chair, comments.
Okay, the approval minutes. But before approval of minutes, I actually have a few comments which obviously were directly in relation to the request of Commissioner Vino to bring the vote for a um, chairperson today. And um, and as you know, our vice chair resigned the commission recently. On the meeting that the city council held on September twenty-sixth, the acceptance of resignation and the appointment of our new newest member of the commission, Commissioner Remus, took place. Uh, after um, long consideration, I felt that it was really important to give every single one of our commissioners the opportunity to consider either self-nominating or nominating others and participating in the process of electing our vice chair. Having Commissioner Remus join commission recently, um, I believe your oath took place on Thursday, Commissioner Remus. Um, I wanted to, to make it clear to everyone that everyone in the commission has the same opportunity to enter the name, self-nomination, nominate another commissioner, and then put everything to a vote, as to have complete transparency and keep this process entirely democratic. And with that, I communicated with Commissioner Vino my um, thoughts about making sure that everyone had the opportunity to think about um, entering the process for nomination and vice chair. And then I felt that it was important for the sake of transparency and um, giving everyone the same opportunity, same level playing field, so to speak, to really think about this. It, it is a commitment. It is a commitment once we enter, right, um, into these positions. And we don't want to take this, obviously, lightly. I understand Commissioner Vino um, uh, interest, and I respect that very much. But I would very much prefer if we were to give everyone the opportunity to think about this and then to come and prepare for our meeting in November, and then to have nominations and to uphold the vote so that everyone will have the same opportunity. And those would be my comments.
Um, Commissioner Vino, just a question, um, we need probably, a job description is a little bit too pedestrian, but some kind of a description of accomplishments and responsibilities. I know, I believe they're in the uh, rules and standards document that Commissioner Vino and I are working on, but it would be helpful to have that maybe Jay sent out, so we'd understand, you know, if we self-nominate or we're voting for somebody else, what the expectation is for their role.
Yeah, well, and also keeping in mind this, very importantly, we, that we, uh, because of these matters of the commission, then we also listen to what our uh, city attorney has to say about these proceedings, right? It's very, very, very important.
I'm sorry, the ci- the city attorney hasn't, has.
No, no, but, but wait, I, I haven't finished my comments.
All right, I would like to say it after.
And the thing is that, obviously, you're, you're working on amending the proceed- procedures, right? Um, and the city attorney has had the opportunity to see that yet?
No.
It was a draft.
It's a draft.
Yeah, and so we would want to submit it to this group, as well as the city attorney when it's complete.
Yeah. So as it is, because we haven't really adopted procedures that have been amended, um, and it was, it was clear in the former document that was written in nineteen ninety-six, then we would have to have nominations and a vote with the full commission. It's not like I, as a chair, it's a, I appoint this person, right? It just doesn't work that way. Um, so again, my, my hope is that everyone will have the opportunity to consider the nomination and then put it to a vote, and for the public record to see that there's full transparency in the process. And, and I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention. Commissioner Greer?
I have a, a question that I'm not seeing where the head state officers in here. Um, I understand that the, these, these seats make up the executive, not is the executive committee responsible for um, making an agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, that's the basic function. Uh, and then also it does, yeah, the executive committee solicit presentations?
So presentations sometimes come to our attention.
Or do they just come and we hear them? I, they're, they're sort of, you understand what I'm saying.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I, 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 if I can be frank, and I'm just gonna be frank. I've been a rotating member of the executive committee since the election in July. The executive committee has multiple functions, one of which is to set the agenda. The setting of the agenda really has not been a collaborate, collaborative uh, effort, in my opinion. Um, so often I, as the rotating member, see the draft agenda after it's been drafted and then have an opportunity via email to provide comments, which may or may not be accepted by the other members of the executives committee. That's number one. If I may also comment on the election of a vice chair today, and as much as I respect that we have a new commissioner um, joining our full commission, I'm not sure I see a difference between electing a vice chair today when we have one new member and electing the vice chair in July when we had three new members. So the idea that we have to have more time to digest and, and self-nominate and consider nominations, I think is a, 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 a false argument. Quite frankly, I don't agree with it. I think all of the commissioners present, with perhaps the exception of the new commissioner, uh, know me well enough to know that, um, you know, I'm committed to the Human Rights Commission, and I think it's important that we have a um, a, a vice chair that's fully engaged and a full executive committee that meets regularly and discusses, among other things, the agenda before you see it. So that's my pitch.
Okay, were you in your locker and on other things? You said that in one of the, again, that on the one.
For the executive committee? Well, it really, I mean, its function is the management of the commission, so it's, it's important to that we have three members who talk about um, and contribute to things like. That we have three members who talk about um and contribute to things like. The revision of the uh standard operating procedures, it kind of is uh it's an executive committee. Kind of make sure the commission's moving in the right direction. And it's more really more than just the agenda, though that's very important.
Yeah, so I would say the description, actually, um, um, Commissioner DiNolo uh put um put into the packet. The old document of the draft of the rules and regulations, so on page four, it's actually page three, it's not numbered. But on the other side of page four, which is page three, of the officers, it describes the job descriptions. It's under officers on page four. There's four, there's three, but this could be helpful in sort of better understanding, although it's pretty, it's pretty loose.
For the off- to the office.
To the officers, yeah.
It also has the executive committee, now I mean, you know, we're gonna re. We look at the executive committee and its responsibilities. As we rewrite this, the admin committee rewrites the standard operating procedures, so it. Would be helpful to have a full executive committee engaged.
From the executive reason that that rewrite of processes procedures and would come from the executive.
So, well, it would be a start, right?
Yeah.
It would be helpful to have the three members of the executive committee sit down in a room and say, what do you see?
Yeah, I I think it's a way of consolidating.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so Jay, how do we move this? Having had this discussion.
Kind of jumped over nine, eight, but I mean, nine.
Um. I I believe the agenda was amended to add a vote. On vice chair and.
The rotating member.
Rotating member.
If necessary.
If necessary.
I didn't want to be presumptuous.
So.
I'm gonna be the vice chair.
No.
I was hoping.
I specifically wrote it that way, not to be presumptuous. I'm not saying. Again, I. I am going to self nominate myself, but I encourage any other commissioner to nominate themselves. For transparency, we should have an election.
We already.
I just want to see us have a vice chair.
But you are currently.
I am currently the rotating member.
The executive committee, yeah.
Currently, there's no vice chair. No.
So. Do we, so we have a nomination.
We have to move that we want to nominate, that you want to self nominate, don't make the big motion.
Commissioner Ford.
I think I I'm not clear where we are of this.
We should be on number eight, number nine, actually.
I mean, as far as the. We approve the minutes.
We haven't approved the minutes. We're kind of stuck on chair comments, but we really should.
I should prove.
Move to number nine and then proceed with the vote on my motion to have an election. To have the election. We've already agreed five and seven agree to have the election.
Okay.
After the approval.
So why don't we then move on to.
I will put to votes to approve the minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September eleven twenty twenty-three?
Someone.
Commissioner Greer, motion, we have a second. Commissioner Randy, second, any discussion? And you have a vote. Please raise your hand if you want to approve the minutes of September twenty, September eleven twenty twenty-three. The minutes have been approved. Okay. And so. Then the next thing in the agenda is items for discussion and action. And it's the executive report.
Well, now we have the election.
Right.
So now we can have the election.
And I would like to self nominate myself for the position.
First of all, I think the chair has to say nominations are now open. And there's a promality, you have to say that a couple of times, okay, the way I understand the Robert rules. Are flexible, so.
All right, so for the. So for the public record, as we do have forum. We have nominations open for the seat of vice chair. Do we have a self nomination or does anyone want to nominate? Another commissioner, it's all. Commissioner Mignolet.
Uh, well, I will nominate myself for the position of vice chair through the end of the term, June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, and we heard your remarks. Is any other commissioner who wants to serve?
I would like to uh be part of the agenda, and I don't really need your own position, so.
Okay, yeah. So it sounds like you would be interested in the rotating. But we would first, we first need to get the vice chair. We first need to get the vice chair, right, the first things.
Is anybody else gonna nominate?
So from those commissioners that are attending today's meeting. Do we have another commissioner intending to nominate for a vice chair? Or someone nominating someone else for vice chair? Speak now. Okay, having heard none, we only have one nomination for vice chair, which is Commissioner DiNola. And we're gonna take a vote. Um, now to the vice chair position by Commissioner DiNola, those in favor, please raise your hand. And we have one, two, three, four, five. Five votes for Commissioner DiNola.
Six.
Six, Commissioner Remus, so we have six.
I think your manifestation's worth it.
So. But the yes have it. Commissioner DiNola, congratulations, you have been nominated and are now elected vice chair of the commission, congratulations.
So now we would have to.
Okay, so now that. Now that you have a key in.
I think he did the rotating member position, we we need to fill that.
And although this position has not been consistent, right, because we we have in our commission, have a rotating member. The current procedures state that this position is for three months. In our meeting in July, if I recall correctly, vice chair, please correct me.
Oh.
Uh, we talked about making this a five month rotating positions, but then we some.
I think it was six.
It was six, because there was originally three, and there were like six.
But again, it's not part of the proceeding procedures yet. Right, it doesn't matter, so as it stands right now, it's a, it seems to be a three month position. Uh, if we understand that, once we have the amendment, working on that document. If we can make sure that it states that it's going to be six months.
Or a year, I mean, we haven't decided for that.
Uh, Commissioner Remus, you have to hand it.
No, that was for my vote for the vice chair.
Okay, great, so now we're gonna move on to the nomination of that rotating position to replace the vacated position. Like Commissioner DiNola, and it sounds like Commissioner Greer. Would be interested, so your hands up. Anyone else like to nominate for that rotating position? Having heard none, we're gonna take a vote. For Commissioner Beverly Greer to be part of the executive committee as a rotating member. Those in favor, please raise your hand. So it looks like we have five, six, seven.
Unanimous.
So it's unanimous.
Whoa.
So by unanimous consent, congratulations, Commissioner Greer, you're now part of the executive.
Thank you.
You want a cake?
I do, we're gonna have.
Do you have any allergies?
So.
How do you kill that pistachio?
I don't like chocolate.
Oh, I was gonna make you some.
All right, so moving along on our agenda, now we're gonna move to uh items for discussion and action. So we did the executive uh report. Um, the next item on the agenda is ten A two. The U S P D L G B D outreach liaison report, I have nothing to report on that. But we're gonna move on to the master calendar by now, vice chair. DiNola, which is a really important part of what is happening in October and November, vice chair.
You should have the revised. Master calendar. Um, I think Jay said he sent it out, it's attached to this. Special meeting agenda, October twenty twenty-three, November and December. So I've updated it this morning just to move the Human Rights Commission special meeting to Tuesday, the tenth. And add the annual state of the city and awards ceremony. Uh, being held on Tuesday, October seventeen, everything else stays the same. Um. Well, we had, we still have some openings for commissioners to participate. At Village Fest. Um. You know, our hope is we have at least two commissioners at each Village Fest. Because it would be hard for one commissioner to. Set the table up and decorate it and. Be there for a whole four hours or more. Um, so I'm appealing again to the commissioners, we have to. Either. Put our names on.
I mean, that's a, that's a, you know, a large. Every week. Should we maybe? So less.
Well, right now, we're only doing it one day, one Thursday in October.
Oh, okay. We have it down everywhere.
So we're looking.
I have put, you know, it 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 occurs weekly, every Thursday, but we have only committed to the nineteenth. Now, I will tell you that the.
Okay.
The Village Fest folks will. Kind of. Frown on us if we only show up once a month, they really, I mean, we're taking space. That could be. Given to another business, another agency, another commission committee. So I really think we have to decide as a body, are we gonna commit to at least? Two Village Fest per month, and that means at least. Four commissioners signing up.
They were dark in the summer, don't they?
They go, no.
No, it goes, it goes later in the day.
They change the hour.
Once it gets colder outside, it starts at six, I believe, and then when it gets warmer to seven, just that way the sun goes behind the mountain.
It's still every weekend, so.
Yes. It's just not everyone goes every weekend, so.
They move it to seven to later, but right now it's six to ten P M.
So, um, in um investigating Village Fest for another uh nonprofit, um. There is a threat for being fined if you are slated to have a a space at the Village Fest if you don't show up. So I don't know.
That wouldn't bite us, though. We're not paying anything.
Yeah, I I worry, I think I think worried about being penalized, as you said.
Yeah, I don't think they'll penalize penalize us, but they'll. You know, but it won't look good if, you know, we never show up, I mean, that's.
We're gonna commit to maybe one a month, one a month.
I can ask.
At least twice.
I think twice is a minimum.
But we're getting into the holidays, you know, are people gonna be here and they not gonna be here?
Again, it's a commitment.
Well, it's.
And if you're going to participate, all you have to say is, yes, I'm willing to spend. A Thursday, or maybe two Thursdays in the month.
For four hours.
For four hours.
Or some portion there.
Okay, I'll I'll commit to uh the seventh fourteen, okay?
Okay, I mean, I'm, right now, I'm trying to. Figure out October. I mean.
I can't.
But I, you know, is it, can anybody? Do the twenty-six with Commissioner Randy or?
I'm not gonna be able to do.
Oh, you can't do it?
No.
So it doesn't sound like October is an easy one.
Well, we'll do the nineteen, but. I I personally, I just don't think it's worth. Doing it once a month, if that's what we're gonna commit to once a month, and that's all we can ever do. I don't think, what's the point?
I mean, you can go ahead and have all of them, because I will be there, I will find a way to be there. But that's also because I'm a high school student and have the time.
So nobody can do the twenty-sixth.
I mean, I can do the twenty-sixth, but I don't, I don't.
I I.
So.
I know, I don't think it's worth, I don't think it's, I don't think you should be there by yourself.
How many people I know that are gonna be there, that's terrifying.
Is anyone gonna be able to do the twenty-sixth?
Well, we'll do the nineteen, they'll see what reaction we get from Village Fest. Um. And if you can do any Thursday in November and December, just send me an email or send it to Jay, so I can update the calendar. But if 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 it becomes an issue, I don't think.
I can do November second.
November second?
Yes. Check the day of the day, that is, um, oh, that's a good day, yeah.
Okay.
It is a good.
And I think he's. Crishing a horn, so you could do what?
Well, I'll do December, because I'll be done with. I got pretty loaded agenda until.
Which is December date?
December fourteenth.
Okay.
So the suggestion was that we look at our calendars every month, and then we just revisit what's coming up. And make sure that we can confirm who's up for what. So that brings us to November, right, which is important.
Yeah, and so the only other, the important thing for November is, because we're not meeting until November thirteenth, is who is. Participating on the Veteran's Day Parade.
But before that, we have pride on the fifth.
We have pride, the pride parade on the fifth, I don't, not aware that we're doing.
Be very honest with all of you, we signed up for this last year, and I was the only person to show. Okay, so it's very demoralizing to just give the one commissioner. Ready to march, and I had to walk behind one of those cars, I was sniffing all those fumes.
I might have pushed the craziness a little.
It was really sad, so the only thing I would like to say is that if you're not committed to do these kinds of things, just don't. Pride is really important because it gives us a lot of visibility, and clearly we need that visibility, right? Because people don't know that we have Human Rights Commission. And the other big event in November is Veterans Day Parade, and we've done this every year, and that is a phenomenal event. So I just want to make sure that we all understand the importance of. If we're, say, we're gonna show up, we show up, we march, we interact with the community, and we'll put the word out that we're part of the Human Rights Commission.
Well, I'll march with you on pride.
This is probably, I will march with you on pride as well.
Okay, Commissioner Remus says yes, so we have three, we have a banner that we have to carry.
It's too heavy.
It's actually not that heavy, I can attest.
I will carry the banner.
I need to let uh the Pride organizers know ASAP because they're closing registration organizations.
I'll do.
What are we gonna wear?
Both pride and. Uh, if I'm in town.
Sunday crisis, remember the picture, I'll be back yet. And Saturday, eleven.
I'll I'll do the Veteran's Day.
I've done the, yeah.
Okay.
Tentative.
And we have to check, because also Commissioner she did not, I don't understand as well.
I can also do the.
I just want to mention something else.
I had to do that, in a car, convertible, I I'll never do it again.
Family and friends are always welcome to march with us.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And it's really nice to enjoy these types of events and festivities with our family and our friends.
I had my partner mark with us last year for the Veteran's Day parade.
Bring your pets if you must. It's. It's a great opportunity, okay? And so those are the two.
Cats are lovely.
Major events, and then we have.
Until everyone starts screaming.
And then on the twentieth, we have Transgender Day of Remembrance, which is also a nice community event, but I don't think anyone is signed up for that. I did it last year, it's a really good community event. A couple of years ago, Commissioner Ramon attended, he he made a few remarks.
So I don't know what's going on for that.
We don't know, we don't know Transgender Day of Remembrance for this year.
Something we can think about with the next meeting, since it'll be before that, and then we can.
Right.
Sign up to go when there's more information about it and out in the public.
So with that, we we go into November, and once we have our meeting in November, we look what's left in November, we'll see what's in December. And if we can do that consistently, then we'll we'll have. Good coverage of event, community events with the mission. Um. All right, so moving along. Next on the agenda. Um, what we have. Master calendar. Main street, nothing to report. Organizing neighborhoods, P S one, do we have anything to report, Vice Chair?
No, I'm gonna try to go to the organ, the meeting, which is that.
I want to remind anyone, Commissioner, that you are welcome to consider. Joining these subcommittees and committees and attending these community events. And if you don't know who who's leading or who has connections, just ask. It it it's important that we go out in the community and we're we're seeing, we need to promote the fact that we have a Human Rights Commission, so. Very important. Um, so moving along, this is Highland, uh, Highland Gate for the State Community Association Liaison Report.
I have nothing to report on that.
Okay, thank you for Commissioner's blood, anything on veterans issues?
Nothing at all.
Okay. All right, cool, um, you did education affairs, a standing committee, do we have anything? Student representative?
Um, not that I know, Vice Chair might know more, also. Former Vice Chair Shepherd is still listed under those.
Yeah, we need to update that. Uh, Jay, can we confirm that we have another application for a student, um? For another student liaison?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we have another application and for another liaison in addition to legal. For have another student joining the commission.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, so. Wonderful.
She's very excited.
And so are we. Uh, Vice Chair, we know, do we have anything mediation?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, anything on equity and social justice, I think this was falling into Commissioner's blood. And, no.
I think this was done, was done on Shepherd's.
And I was on, she was very, she wanted it to stay.
Perhaps the new commissioner will like.
They wouldn't, they went around, right? So that will be a good commission for you to consider, Commissioner, uh, we must equity and social, social justice.
Oh, I will, uh, do you have like a description of what that subcommittee is in charge of? I mean, it's very clear from here, but a little bit more details.
Well, it's something that we're looking at updating in our operating procedures.
Okay.
You know, more to come on that, so you might actually help us write that. What you think it might involve, but.
Okay.
This is a liaison position to a committee that the city council formed, and my understanding is it has not been meeting. As often as was anticipated, so we'll try to get an update on that.
Okay.
Commissioner, I have a question, Commissioner Rayo, so when we, as a liaison, do we wear our name tags?
So, very good question, yes, um, just very quickly reviewing this. When we are in the community, we are representing the commission, right, and it's important that we wear. Name badges so that people can recognize you're part of the commission. If you're asked to make public comments, particularly from the media. It is incredibly important that you do not speak when we have the commission, you go on the record as your opinion, okay? Things that we haven't discussed in the commission and we haven't agreed this commission should not be put forward to the public. As this is what the commission feels for things. Very, very important, but yes, wear your badges, get out there and interact with people, listen, listen, listen. Bring information back, and then that's one way in which we will all be able to contribute, um. To the commission and to the community, okay? So, yes, we will share with you, Commissioner, and our city commission on our, um, liaison for equity and social justice. Thank you, Jay, for that. The next item since I can meet from this point is discussing the proven expenditure funds from the Human Rights Commission budget. For Village Fest materials to include folding chairs or folding table and folding canopy in the amount of not to exceed five hundred dollars. Um, since we, um, do have the stipend that the city gives in the commission, we certainly have the funds for this. And I know that Jay and Vice Chair, you know, have been looking at prices at lows in our places. So it looks like it's doable, yes.
Oh, yeah, I already purchased it, but it's returnable. Everything's in its original card, but it came to. Came to. Two oh six point four zero. And it can obviously be used for any event that the Human Rights Commission. Would participate in.
So I have a question for you too, for the Village Fest, these are these items. I mean, I guess, just as a comment, you're gonna have to plan those logistics, who's gonna bring them to the Village Fest? Who sets up the tent, blah, 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 okay, it's complicated.
It is, I mean, it's. Probably the most complicated piece will be getting. The table to. One commissioner who's gonna be there, either I bring it to Jay's office, or Jay is the master keeper of it, I don't know.
We we have a tablecloth with a logo, and we have two banners in the back of the room, which I returned today. And anyone who wants to.
That's a table.
There's the ta- the tablecloth, the table skirt, the yellow with a nice beautiful logo. And two banners, one in yellow and one in white.
Where are we keeping it?
For now, they're gonna live here.
Uh, that's, that's fine, over the years, they've lived at various commissioners' towns and garages, so they just came from my garage. Yeah, it it's, uh, it, we're, we're pretty flexible in that regard, as long as we do know where it is.
They won't walk away if we lose that.
Grow legs, leave.
And they carry both the city, the city logo and the Human Rights Commission logo.
I may take the table.
And I have to say, other commissions are very.
A logo and badges.
Okay, great, so, um, agenda items for the next H R C meeting, um. What do we pass? Yes, the budget item, yes, so less than five hundred dollars, it looks like we totally meet that. So we're gonna put that to a vote to approve the expenditure of two hundred and something dollars to purchase those items. Um, motion?
Motion, I move.
Any comments, well? We certainly need those things, thank you, so it passes unanimously. I had a few. Notes, yes, one of the notes that I have from the items for next meeting. We are getting very close to November, and with that. We must talk about our community service awards. Commissioner Reims, do you hand this up or was that both?
I've never lowered it.
I lowered it, it was, um, I was just voting for that, the last, um, the last request.
So every year, for the past few years, we've had community service awards awarded to the organizations and individuals. That go above, you know, serving our community and various aspects of human rights. It's a really important event for our mission, the access lab visibility, our city fully supports this type of activity. Last year, the announcement to receive applications. Came out on November the fifteenth, this is done by our communications director, Amy Blythe, the health department. It goes out on social media, we ask commissioners to take that information and share it on our own social media channels. To amplify the invitation for applications. Um, we try to close applications, um, by a certain date, you know, in December, last year was December the ninth, which was Friday. I checked the calendar, I think this year closes on December the eighth, which is also a Friday. That gives us two to three weeks to look at every application. We form a small committee to look at the applications and vote on those who we believe are worthy of the award and recognition. We discourage self-nominations, okay? Any self-nominations or, uh, anything like that, or organizations saying we did great and we'd like to receive that award. Is discouraged. Um, once the commission agrees on the awardees. Um, we contact them on Christmas time to let them know that they have been awarded, they will be awarded. The Human Rights Commission Community Service Award. We have an event in February at the City Council Chambers. Where we do the celebration of the awards, and everyone is invited to get involved and participate in this. It's a fantastic community outreach activity and event, so. What we need to do is communicate with, um, our director of communications, Amy Blythe, to find out the dates for the release. And send out the application information. Agreed on the closing of the applications, which I was looking at my calendar, I think it's December the eighth this year. But I could be wrong, if anyone could check their calendars quickly.
You have a ca- you have a calendar, try it. That's a, yeah, that's Friday, December eighth, it's on a.
Yeah, so this year is December the eighth, that gives us one to, that gives us about three weeks to look at the applications and then. Go through the selection process. Okay, and everyone is invited to participate in this activity, it's really important.
Do we give the award to anything, they have a?
They have a nice little plaque. And we allow them to make remarks to the public, to tell us.
What they did.
What they did, um, we do prepare remarks and events, and everyone will have an opportunity to make an introduction. Of an awardee, so whether it's an organization or an individual. All of us will be asked to participate in saying something about. Their award.
Just one in the past, I mean, can we, can we nominate? Um, can can we nominate organizations where we have a board relationship?
As long as there's no conflict of interest.
Meaning financial.
Or you have votes. If you're a board member of an organization and you and you vote on that organization, that will be considered a conflict of interest.
Okay, because a board member sold, right? Okay.
So transparency is key here, so no self-nominations, be, if you're gonna nominate an organization or individual, think about it very clearly. Um, we want to avoid any possibility of someone saying, but that commissioner sits on this board. They do fundraising, so none of that has to be completely transparent.
Can you give us examples of, um, um, organizations or people who have won awards last year?
Yeah, so last year, I can tell you a few, uh, Oscars downtown.
Can I just, the recipient list is posted on the website.
Yeah, but just to give you an example, very quick example, Oscars at the downtown Palm Springs, which is a restaurant that has. Shows and et cetera, they host a Christmas holiday breakfast for homeless. The day of Christmas, and they go out in the community and they look for people down the streets and they invite them to come over. And they feed them, and the community gathers items for the homeless. Um, K E A hosts music, and there's all kinds of really nice things for everyone, so that would be worthy. Something that will be worthy, that tied to the pandemic, there were several organizations that helped with vaccinations. Um, you know, very selfishly going out, um, another person went on the community and gathering meals. Or seniors who couldn't go out and do shopping for themselves, that's the kind of thing that we would like to recognize. Right, so important to keep in mind, I'd like to make sure that for on November, we worked on the logistics and, uh. The invitation for applications to sort it out and about. Oscars will also host a nominees dinner at their expense. The owner instituted this as an ongoing yearly event, he pays for everything.
It was a really nice event last year.
And he's already reached out to say, one day I need, I need a date. For the recipient's dinner, and it's a private event, they cooked us dinner, it's a beautiful, beautiful private. Uh, event to celebrate everyone who will be getting an award, um, for that. Um, so that's one item that I have. We talked about pride, and we read on that, we're gonna be marching.
Did you?
Is there any?
Did you want to put on the agenda for November thirteenth, a presentation by. Helpful member hostage?
Excuse me, exactly, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Commissioner, yes, um, can we add, um, to the agenda, a presentation by, uh. A council member, Kristi Hostage, and she'll talk about, um, um. Uh, uh, maybe a history of how homelessness initiatives evolve in the city and where we are today.
That's great.
Do you know how much time she will need?
I'm meeting with her like in a couple weeks, what, how much time do we want to allocate, fifteen, twenty minutes?
Do we have to work with her executive assistant?
So that would be something.
Committed to that date, right?
So this is something we need to coordinate with our liaison. Our staff liaison.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, um, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, Ricky has. Uh, set up and arranged for the presentation, and it's, um, accepted on the agenda. That's, that's absolutely right.
Okay, so we're gonna be moving into final announcements. And I don't know if you have anything to share in final announcements, I have just one very brief set of remarks.
I have one thing.
Yes.
Uh, I just, uh, maybe I was a breakdown of communication when we booted bowling game. Uh, September thirtieth, I was there at eight thirty, and I stayed till eleven o'clock, I didn't see, I was the only one there unless people came in the afternoon.
Wow.
Okay, I was on, I just wanted. We got out there, that I was there with my head tag and observing and speaking to people. So it was a well attended event, and I think I had another engagement at eleven o'clock, so I had to leave about ten to eleven. And I think at that time, they were expecting the mayor to come, and unfortunately, no one was there. See, uh, grace, but anyway, that's, I just wanted to bring that out, thank you.
So any other announcements or comments, Vice Chair?
I do have, um. Real quickly, um, and I'll give Jay a copy of this to include, um, in the record, but, um. I wanted to bring to the commission's attention a recent incident earlier this month at the Palm Springs Bookstore. Several books written by black women were flipped on their shelves so that their spines were inside and the pages were out. Um, I think, uh. I'll include the email that I received, because I'm on the distribution list for the bookstore, but it was from the owner. Bringing it to the attention of the community, and, uh, I think. For me personally, I think, you know, the Human Rights Commission would want to express their condemnation of this type of. Behavior in our city, um, so I did reach out to the owners and expressed my personal. Uh, condemnation of that, and said I felt the Human Rights, I invited him to come speak to. The Human Rights Commission, but fortunately, uh, and I'll review his very brief email. He said, first of all, thank you very much for all the important work you and the Human Rights Commission do here in the city. Thank you for reaching out about the recent incident in the store. As you say, it is not something that any of us would expect to happen in Palm Springs. And definitely not representative of our wonderful city and community. Both Sarah and I are incredibly grateful for the invitation to speak at the next public meeting. Fortunately, we're scheduled to be at a conference in Hawaii at the time, so will not be able to attend. But I, of course, would be very glad for you to enter my earlier email into your public record. If there is anything else at all we can do to support your work, and that of the Human Rights Commission, please don't hesitate to let us know. So it was pretty disheartening to learn about somebody doing that, they don't really know. They have no idea who it was, but, um. I mean, we're not totally immune from incidents of hate, and so I think it's important that we.
Yeah.
Stay on target, you know, express our displeasure and condemnation of things like this and work to. Wherever, however we can and whenever we can to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, it's such a minor act, too, like. It it's, they didn't damage the book, but they moved them in a way that expresses discontent.
Yeah.
Which is really. To me, it's so almost, almost feels petty. Like, it's such a small, minor thing to do to express your discontent for something. Like it's such a small, minor thing to do to express your discontent with something. And the what comes from that is really unfortunate. It's, it's such a small action that has such a heavy like meaning behind it, or a heavy. It's communicating a heavy message, which is unfortunate. Because even that little thing can snowball into something that it means more than just that small thing.
You know, I, I think we probably, I mean, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Vellou. But I, I wonder if, you know, because we have a lot of tourists and people from all over the country, all over the world coming here, that we could be somewhat victimized by that kind of behavior. Because I, you know, it's, you know, the community is, you know, is so inclusive and diverse that I doubt it came from the community, but you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really could have been anybody.
Be very vigilant. Obviously, we live in the bubble and, you know, these sides.
But I wanted to bring it up because I think it's things like this that give us as a commission an opportunity publicly to make people aware that we exist, that we, you know, are engaged with the community, and that we react and we speak out when things like this happen. We can't issue press releases because those come through our the communications director. But, you know, if they start to multiply, I think we as a commission should be on the leading edge of making sure the bigger community knows we don't accept this type of behavior and there are things you can do about it. Here they are, and we're here to assist you as a Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, certainly.
That's it. How is that communicated?
Yeah.
How is that communicated then? Is it just you hear it becomes part of our minutes or? I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner, that this is something that does more of a statement or something. How do we make that statement?
I think, and I know, I mean, we could perhaps, maybe we need to sit down with Amy Blaisdell and discuss with her procedures or protocols. How, how can we issue? Or, or at least give her some information that she could then do something.
Because it's part of communications from the city, and she will be the conduit to make this available to the public.
So there's a, there isn't like a subset of communication processes of people that then communicate for you.
Right, so again, when we're asked about our opinions about certain things, it's important that we make it clear that that's what we think. As a commission, we have to be very careful how we communicate to the public, but if something like this needs to be communicated to the public, we need to coordinate through the correct channels to make sure that we're not overstepping our boundaries with the roles of a communications director from the city. And with that, I wanted to just mention that with all these terrific, horrific events in Gaza happening, we might be asked where do we stand? And obviously, each one of us will come to this from hopefully a similar perspective, but you know, the fact that these terrorist attacks are targeting civilians clearly is a violation of international law and human rights. So however we wanna phrase this, we just have to be very careful. We have lots of friends who are suffering because they have friends, they have families there, and this is a really difficult time for us to to not take a position, right? And not say, hey, this is not acceptable from a human rights perspective. So I just wanna make sure that you all understand that this is very difficult time, and we have to be very careful how we communicate this. Of course, we wanna say that we want peace. And we want this a solution to the conflict. Things of that nature, very generic statements, fine to make. But however you feel about one side or the other, just be very careful how you communicate this through the public. I received a letter from the former chair of the Human Rights Commission and now council member on the part, which I'll read very, very quickly. These are remarks, his remarks with regards to Donna Shepherd. He says, dear Donna, on behalf of the entire community, myself, I want to thank you so much for your valuable service and commitment during your tenure on the Human Rights Commission. Your tireless dedication to upholding and advancing human rights in our city has made a significant impact on the lives of our residents. Your unwavering commitment to justice equality and inclusivity has strengthened our community. Throughout your time on the commission, you consistently demonstrated insightful perspective and deep understanding of complex issues the commission address. Your willingness to engage in topical dialogue, listen to diverse voices, and work collaboratively with fellow commission members has been instrumental. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and the positive changes you have helped bring about in Palm Springs will continue to benefit future generations. Your legacy as a champion of human rights is firmly established, and your contributions will be remembered throughout your generation. While your term on the commission has ended, please note that your impact will endure. I am confident that you will continue to be a beacon of hope and a force for positive change in our community. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to the cause of human rights and for making Palm Springs a better, more inclusive place for all. Your service has been invaluable, and I am deeply grateful for your contributions. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Long heart, founder, chair, Human Rights Solution, Palm Springs City Councilman. So that's for public record. Any additional comments? Before we adjourn? So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
So vice chair motions, we have a second to adjourn.
A second.
Commissioner flood seconds. Any further discussion? I haven't heard none. We are going to adjourn. The commission will adjourn to adjourn in regular meeting Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.